All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order please. And please turn all electronic devices, phones, any of the gadgets off or to vibrate. And if this is not in, can you please do just a prayer and place a seat.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for this day. We ask, Lord, that you will watch over us, guide us, and direct us, Lord, as we carry on business for this wonderful town of Ballenger. We ask this all in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I salute your power for religious reasons. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, consider proof of the minutes of the December 1st, 2015 meeting. Y'all have time to review.
I make a motion that we agree amended from the December 21st, 2015 meeting.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, visitors are now in a regular agenda. We'll be given the opportunity to address the seat council at this time on any subject. If anybody here, my one and only here, could come and see. All right, discuss and take action on presentation from Ms. Ferguson concerning building permits and inspections. That's what it comes.
I brought some pictures to put their face to what was coming up. Y'all have a plan on that. This is my dad. He's ninety-two years old. He'll be ninety-three years old in April. I came in, in October, and I got a permit from the city. To build a home onto my home. Like a mother-in-law's type palace or whatever. So that I can take care of him instead of him having to go to the nursing home. We hired a contractor who seemed to be illegitimate and came with a high recommendation. Unfortunately, we did not get what we paid for. We have paid him to date eighty-four thousand dollars. For a six hundred square foot living space and garage. I have some pictures here, show you some of the work that we received. This gentleman has now gone to Alaska to visit his mother, and I can't tell you if he's coming back or not. I've had four people talk to him, and none of them can give me an exact answer. All the holes where all the plugs are. Electrical plugs, cable plugs, phone plugs are all, looks like somebody punched a hole in the wall. They're all extremely large. Lynn Smith did our electrical. And he got the biggest plates he could, and it won't cover the holes. Some of that, you can see posts that come on the front porch. They're split. Some are split all the way down. The workmanship, I've had two inspections on it, had two inspectors look at it. And one of them said there's probably about ten to twelve thousand dollars left of work to be done. And the other guys, sugar headed, said, "Oh, my God, this is horrible." So, I know Ballenger has a policy where all you do is give your fifteen dollars, and you get your permit, and you're out the door. I'm asking for more than that. Not for me, but, and I can't help my dad with this, okay? This is done. This is over. But to keep someone else from having to go through this and being ripped off. I'm asking the city to please put on there that if it's new construction, that they have to have insurance and be bonded. To protect us, because we have no recourse. This guy has nothing. What am I gonna sue? You know, I can't sue him. He doesn't have anything. I talked to the county judge. The county judge said that we could probably put him in jail, but it would be work. For an attorney, this is my husband, a person. For an attorney to take a case, it's thirty-five hundred dollars. That's a lot of money for somebody that just spent eighty-six thousand dollars. We have an air conditioner that was put in by, as far as I know at this point, someone who was not a licensed contractor. So unfortunately, we have no recourse on that, and it's, there's no warranty. Because it was put in by someone who is not a licensed air conditioning person. And like I said, it's too late for us. We're already, I mean, we're already in the pool. But to keep someone else from going through this. I have beat the street. I have talked to attorneys. I've talked to the city of San Angelo. I've knocked on doors. I've talked to Drew Darby. I've talked to everybody I can talk to. And can I keep this stuff? He's got some stuff there, a couple of scaffolds.
It'd be several. It'd be a several matter. I'd ask your attorney.
You would ask me to return it?
No, I would ask your attorney about that.
Okay, well, one word tells us we have to give it back to him because it's his work equipment. But obviously, he doesn't need it too bad because it's still in our, in our house.
You might be able to lean against it, but that, you'd have to ask your attorney.
If you came into my house, would you make me, make me give it to him?
Well, if there was a, no, we can't make you give property to him unless he had a court order.
Okay.
A court order.
I would beg him to go to court. Let's, please, let's go to court. What I'm asking is, Ballenger is a city. We are not a big city, but we're not nothing either. And we're a city of older people. This is a town full of older people who come here to retire, who come here to get away from the big city. And we need some kind of protection. We need something to say that Joe Blow contractor, who's actually built a doghouse. Can't come into town and spend eighty thousand dollars of someone's money and leave them hanging. We need some sort of recourse. And we have none. We have no recourse whatsoever. We can sue him and sue him in court, but that, that already causes you to get your coffee in your restaurant town. You know, there's no, we have no recourse. If we, if he'd been bonded, now I take this upon me, I should've been smarter. Sometimes I'm not nearly as smart as I think I am. But if he'd have been bonded, he'd have been insured, I would've had, we'd have recourse. Now, I have a ninety-two-year-old dad crawling around on the floor trying to put trim on. I have a ninety-two-year-old dad who's looking in his garage and wondering, "How am I gonna paint this?" I have a ninety-two-year-old dad who's sitting in his house wondering, "What are we gonna do when it gets hot outside? Because we don't have any air conditioning that works." We need, this town needs some sort of recourse to represent its citizens if they get taken like this. And I'm not saying it has to be like if you're gonna, if, say you're gonna change your kitchen around. You wanna put new cat again. That's a different deal, but new construction is not. New construction is a major objective. It's a major project. And we need somebody to help us. You know, as poor, ignorant people here, like I said, I thought I was smarter than this, and I'm not. He got us. He got us good.
So you're saying this was added onto your house?
It was added onto my house, it is. So that I can step across the way and care for him without having to take him to a nursing home. But we just need something, you know, especially new constructions, we paid this guy eighty-four thousand dollars. Then I'm getting people showing up at my door, like the plumbing people, "We need a check." "Well, I have a contract, but we need a check." Okay, well, if I pay him, he gets a lien on our home. Well, this guy was supposed to pay him. He didn't do it. Then I have cabinet people who call me, "We need a check." "He's supposed to pay that." "Well, he hasn't paid it, and you need to get down here with a check today." You know, so we're, I mean, we're screwed. There's nothing we can do. And I'm asking the city to step up to the plate and add some more rules to this. I mean, we need something to protect, especially the elderly, especially the elderly. If my dad hadn't had us around, he'd have got it all worse. Because he was writing checks out like they were paper, like they were candy. And that's how we got into this bind, is he, every time a guy asked for money, he'd give him a check. He gave him a check for fifteen thousand, and then another for seventeen thousand, and then every time he asked for a check, he'd give him another check. And finally, I said, "No more checks." We owe the guy right now about twenty-five hundred dollars. That's all we have to hold over his head. That's it. And whether or not he comes back from Alaska and decides to finish the job is a long shot. We just talked to the guy, to a contractor that knows him really well, and he said there's about ten, ten to twelve thousand dollars worth of work still here to be done. And he doesn't know if he's gonna come back either. But if he was, if he had insurance and he was bonded, we could go to them, and they would recourse on him. And they would pay to have this finished. Now, like it is, we've got to tie him up with another ten thousand dollars to get it finished. And that's what I'm asking the city to do, protect us more, protect us from the vultures out there that don't care about old people. Take advantage of old people every day. You know, we need this. We need this to protect our, our people. I've lived here twenty years, and I've seen this happen four or five times to older people. And they have, they just blow it off because they have nowhere to go. And they don't have the money to go hire a attorney. We need some more rules. We need some regulations. You know, I know asking for inspectors is probably a lot, but you could always charge the contractor for an inspector. Make that, make that fee for that permit five hundred dollars or two hundred and fifty dollars, depending on whatever. That'll pay for somebody to go out and look at it a couple of times and make sure that they're not just getting taken. But we need some help. We need some, they definitely need to be bonded and bonded and insured. And that's what I'm asking for today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who was the contractor?
His name is Thomas, Billy Thomas Lewis. He goes by Tom Lewis at 401, at 401 K Construction. He's out of San Angelo. And when I get through with him, he probably wants to build a doghouse. I have an appointment at Drew Darby's office on Wednesday, and I'll also talk to the San Angel Home Builders Association about him. And I'm gonna talk to everybody that'll listen, everybody that'll hear my story. Because my dad's ninety, ninety-two years old. He spent his life savings getting into this house so that I could take care of him. Where are we gonna get the other ten thousand dollars?
May I speak to the council?
Yes, sir.
I guess what she's wanting, all right, is also to protect, for y'all to protect us against ourselves. We thought we were smarter than this. And this guy, he was good. He knew what he was doing, and he worked it around in such a way, he got all of his money up front. So, I don't know what you guys can do about that, if there's anything that can be done. But maybe if they are bonded and insured, at least we do know that they're reputable enough that maybe we can trust them. And this guy came highly recommended. He's built beautiful homes. The guy that recommended him to me built a home here in the south of Ballenger. He came down the day and looked at the work, and he was just off. I guess if you could protect us from ourselves, it would help.
I think we, I think we have to look at other ordinances to see how other cities have done this.
San Angelo's very tough.
Because I, I, I don't know, to be honest, we just run off the cuff. I don't know how successful we'd be for a town like San, have our inspector do all those inspections, to be honest with you. But I don't know that we couldn't pass some kind of ordinance to be bonded and insured for projects over a certain value. But I, we did check other cities to see how they handle that.
Yeah.
In San Angelo, you have to be bonded, you have to be insured. You used to have to be licensed, but the state dropped that because it didn't have enough people to follow up, manpower to follow up on the license. And they also charge a fee, depending upon the amount of the house. Like to a certain amount, it's two hundred dollars. Then over that amount, it's four hundred dollars. And then it goes on up, and it, it can go up to a thousand dollars.
Right, but for a town like San, if you ask, that would stifle all.
You couldn't do that.
Yeah.
And I know it would be hard to get an inspector, I mean, first of all, new construction in Ballenger is not something you're gonna see every day.
I, I would be shocked if you added more than five.
In a year?
In a year.
Yeah, okay. So that's, that's not a stretch. If you couldn't do five inspections in a year.
Well, it's not just doing five. If you only have five, why would you hire somebody to do five inspections? That becomes the problem. San Angelo doesn't have that problem. They've got buildings going on all the time.
But you could hire someone and say, "Okay, I hired Devin Hall. He's very, very, very good, reputable contractor. He's meticulous to the nth degree. I paid him a hundred dollars to kinda do it. It would be a part-time job. Somebody who knows construction and is very meticulous could do that." Even if you couldn't have an inspector, just to have the insurance and the bonded, that would be worth, that would be priceless. To my ninety-two-year-old dad, that would be priceless. Because now we have somebody to go talk to. Now we've got somebody that's gonna pay us this ten thousand dollars to finish this.
I want to check with other ordinances to see how they handle that.
There's, yeah, there's a couple of thoughts about it. One, the contractor issue, we can contract out with the city of San Angelo when they're just doing, just a personal services contract with whoever the city of San Angelo uses for their code. But that's their lives to run. We would have to adopt probably the latest version of their national building code. And that's about as much teeth as we're gonna be able to get to that we, that we can reasonably enforce. San Angelo, Abilene, they're bigger areas, Millin' Woodness, obviously. They can adopt a stricter code because they have the resources to go out and do it.
Right.
But even those codes are gonna be, they're very limited to electrical, plumbing, roof. I don't wanna say fire protection is in there too. Maybe HVAC is included in that, your air conditioning heating system. I'm not, I'm uncertain on that as well. In terms of bonded and licensed, I've gotta look and see what other cities are doing on that. I like the idea. I like.
There is no license anymore.
Well, bonded and insured is already, yes. I like that approach to it. But realistically, I don't know what kind of enforcement we would have on that. Other than someone can, when they do the construction, they'd have to show that they're bonded and insured.
And you come in and fill out the form to get the permit.
And they'd have to get an surety bond and so on and so forth.
I didn't have to show anything. I said, "Fifteen dollars, here you go. I'm out of here."
Well, he, we can require the subcontractors to have a license, but he cannot, you know, the general contractors do not have that license.
Right, exactly. But the general, but what we're finding out is, when it comes to the general contractor, the buck stops there. If he hires a guy who's not licensed as an HVAC.
He's responsible.
He's responsible.
Yeah.
Okay, so in this situation, if I go after him, I'm going after air.
Do you have a contract with this person?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I don't need to say this, need to make sure you have one.
It's, it's pretty, pretty bland if it's not. Let me tell you, the next contract I have to work with is gonna be from a big attorney who's really strong and knows what he's doing.
Did he violate that contract that you have in writing?
Yes, sir, he did. He agreed to pay all these contractors, we hired Lynn Smith, because we know Lynn Smith, and we know he does top-notch work. We agreed to pay Lynn Smith, which is on this contract. He agreed to pay all the other contractors. And what ended up happening is he got all his money, and then he sent the contractors to us.
The judge didn't think there was a criminal case, sir?
The judge said there is a criminal case. He said he could probably put him in jail. And he might get, he might get probation, but his probation wouldn't be lifted until this was satisfied. But, coulda, woulda, shoulda, you know, we don't know.
This happens from Louisiana to Arizona up to Oklahoma, because I work familiar. And we run into this, I mean, not all the time, but it just happens.
But y'all are a reputable company.
Well, but it doesn't, when I say happens to our customers, well, we sold the building to the contractor, not the customer.
Right.
And so we're, we always have these issues go on. The problem is, you can do whatever you wanna do, but you're never gonna find that guy. Because he's not probably gonna come back from Alaska if he hears about this, you know, he's gonna hang out there. And so that's the complexity.
But if we'd had the mon, if we'd had the insurance and stuff up, then we would have.
Well, then he just files for bankruptcy, and then opens up a new company under a different name, operating that. Well, I'm just, I'm, this is, I mean, as I'm processing this in my head.
It's the real world.
It's a tough, it's a, it's a, it's a real tough issue, you know?
It is.
I mean, that's the, that's the, that's the step we try to bridge in, you know, is providing that assurance that no matter what happens, we're gonna take care of things.
There is no magic answer, and I know that. But I, and as far as you're concerned, that's it. I mean, there's nothing y'all can do for us, you know?
Well, but I think that there's a valid point there. I mean, what I wouldn't wanna do is say, for all construction, including remodel, it has to be bonded and insured. Because there's all kinds of work that goes on that those guys couldn't afford to be bonded and insured and do that kind of work. But there is some limit, in my mind, that we could set, draw a line, say, anything over this, I'm out.
You're looking at eighty-six thousand dollars here.
Yeah, it's, it's below that.
Yeah.
But, but we could, we could say, "You need to be bonded and insured," and they need to bring that in. You know, when you file your permit, you need to bring that in.
That's what I'm asking for.
And so, but, but what I don't know is if, it's always better, instead of us making up our own ordinances, if we can find that somewhere in some other city and then use that language. Because then that's been tested and tried, and then nobody can challenge that or their hand, but it's, it's.
I can have, I can have a draft of new construction ordinance by the next council meeting, and we can, we can review that. That won't be a problem.
I just, like I said, it's too late for us. I mean, what's done is done. So if you drop by my house and you see me up on a ladder, feel free to stop and help us call or paint. But if someone else is ninety-two years old, and someone comes up and they need something built. You know, maybe, maybe it would keep them from getting taken at the clam. I know we had another friend, he paid, got a guy to do a front porch. A guy had to have his money up front. He paid the money up front, and he never saw him again.
Yeah, never. What kind of work you need versus what is on the house?
It's mostly painting and caulking, few repairs, trim work. It's things that I can do. It's just the principle of it. And I'm old school. I don't really want the city in my business. This is one time I wish y'all were in my business, to protect me from my soon.
The air conditioner is the big issue.
Yeah, we're afraid that the man who put that in did not have a Texas license. We're, we're pursuing that.
And if that's the case, then we have an air conditioner that has no warranty on it. And we have a heater that with no warranty on it.
He spent four days trying to get it running. Made five a cent a man from San Angelo, it was every fifteen minutes. Charged me a hundred ninety-two fifty. All he had to do was reverse two wires, the polarity on the plug, because they're polarity sensitive. So that makes you wonder just how knowledgeable he was.
And it was funny, because I kept asking for his card, and he said, "I'm out of card. Why didn't you give me card?" And, you know? So, but you trust your general contractor. You trust them, you know? And it's obvious that our trust was misplaced. And I would just, to me, it's just important that this doesn't affect anybody else. It's, to me, it's so important. I don't want anybody else to use this guy. I'm gonna just get up on Indian Hill and I'm gonna announce to everybody in Ballenger, "Do not use these guys." And when I get through here, I'm going to San Angelo, "If I have my way about it, this man will not build the doghouse." And we talked about this, didn't we? He will not build the doghouse within a hundred miles of here. I am gonna tell everybody who listens this story. Because he's not, if he's gonna screw us, he's gonna screw somebody else. And I'm just, I'm afraid it will be another elderly person that has, that does not have family, that does not have recourse to someone to lean on. To someone to, that can go out there and finish painting, or go out there and put six cases of caulk on it. You know, I, I just, these people, of course, I'm, I'm the air place fly, the newspaper. So many of these people here are my friends. So many of the elderly people are my friends that I see, you know, when I go to Walmart, when I go to the grocery store. And I would hate to hear this same story from some of my elderly customers. It would break my heart. It happened to me, and then it turned around and it happened to me too.
As you can see, she's very passionate about this.
I'm sorry.
Anybody should be.
It's my day. I only get one.
We thank you for your time.
Yeah, absolutely, for it. We will look into it, and we'll try to do whatever, but, Phil, it's right. We would look at, adopt something that's already been tried and true, and try to implement it and adopt it and modify it where we can use it.
If I can help y'all in any way, if you have any more questions, feel free to call me. I know you two know how to get a home, I mean.
Did you get your pictures back?
Yeah, we'll care.
Right here.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
There's no action. Well, I guess if you want the action made for me to, you're going to start me to draft a new construction ordinance, a draft ordinance.
Well, I think we just need to review, right?
Review what we have and implement to confirm something, or is it?
Yeah. I mean, do, do we want, do we, are we going to draft something, or do we wanna just say, hey, look at whatever people have, and we can review it?
Look and let's see what other people have, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. You have to modify that.
You need to talk to other, like, named home builders associations, local associations.
Yeah, just see what they, see what they say. I mean, because in my mind, there ought to be some dollar limit where we say, okay, over this X dollar amount. You know, that contractor may be bonded, because they're gonna do work in the city. That protects us. That protects our residents. And it doesn't make it anti-competitive. That's what I was a little bit worried about, is if you say, okay, everything over fifteen hundred bucks. Well, there's a lot of contractors working out of the house that can't afford.
They do great work.
They do great work and afford to be bonded and insured.
So you, you wanna authorize me to get suggestions in, for the other cities?
Some would.
Second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, move along. Discuss and consider amendments to the draft modular home ordinance. You should have that in your packet.
I think y'all should have it in your packet.
And this kinda dovetails with Ms. Ferguson's presentation. And so, if y'all haven't read it, probably the first five or six pages are kind of some notes in terms, just basically my research that I've done. It's similar to what y'all just started me to do on the new construction. I took some, what I would call less restrictive definitions and policies, and I took some that are very restrictive. But my, our draft ordinance will begin on the third to last page. Kind of tells you, the opening paragraph kinda tells you how we got here. And kinda the events that took place to lead to this. We will put this, whatever ordinance we come up with, will be in section fifteen of the code of ordinances. And so with that understanding. Basically, this is going to define what a modular home is. It is going to be a dwelling that is manufactured in two or more modules at a location other than the home site. And which is designed to be used as a residence when the modules are transported to the home site. And the modules are joined together and installed on a permanent foundation system, and I'll get to that here in a second. The term includes the plumbing. The term includes the plumbing, heating, air conditioning, and electrical systems contained in the structure. And expressly provided, however, that the term modular home shall not mean or apply to, and that the following items are expressly excluded from the per- perbed of this chapter. Sectional or panelized housing, in which the basic components assembled at the home site are not at least three-dimensional modules. Or, a ready-built home, which is constructed so that the entire living area is contained in a single intersection at a separate location, for the purpose of installing and moving it to another location. In other words, modular homes do not apply to a ready-built home. A ready-built home is something completely different than a modular home. Are y'all comfortable with that? Permanent foundation. A modular structure should, a perimeter curtain wall that is required shall be one of the following types. Four-inch-wide cement beam from the footing up to the bottom of the structure frame, with a six-inch by six-inch by ten-inch gauge wire mesh within the beam, shall have the anchor bolts at least ten feet on center to anchor to the structure to the beam. Brick-rocked cement footing from ground to the bottom of the structure, framed with anchor bolts ten feet on center to anchor bolts to structure the beam. Three-quarters inch lab and plaster with support piers ten feet on center around the perimeter of the structure. Each pier to have anchor bolts to anchor the pier to the structure frame. Sign that corresponds with that of the structure and support piers ten feet on center around the perimeter of the structure with anchor bolts. B, center support piers are required and shall be one of the following: a center pier with cement footing and an anchor strap. Cement footing with approved steel piers that are bolted to the footing and welded to the frame. So y'all clear on the permanent foundation? Clear as? And I wanna try to get some pictures of what this means, but I wanted to see where y'all, if I am.
This is, this is not unusual, unusual construction for this happen.
Yeah, and this is standard, well, probably standard, but it's within.
Yeah.
You, you are definitely delineating, though, from a double-wide.
Well, what were I?
Or a new art home.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah. It, it's kind of a step, it's, it's maybe a step above, I don't know if that's the correct characterization or not, but. Modular homes shall be permitted in all, in all used districts the same as conventional residential structures as set forth in the code. Modular type structures shall be permitted in non-residential used districts the same as conventional non-residential structures as set forth in this code. So we, we're not going to, for lack of a better term, discriminate against modular homes. Uh, modular homes are gonna be required to meet or exceed all the building codes and setback requirements that apply to other buildings concerning onsite construction. The building official is so notified in writing in the form of application for the purpose of establishing procedures for the inspection issued in building permits in the compliance of the Texas Department of Specialized Housing and Buildings Act. Uh, in other words, I would give Corey and Steve the authority to go out and do the inspection to make sure that it's actually on the foundation, it's going to be a permanent foundation system. No permits shall be issued for the placement of a modular home until a complete set of plans and specifications of the modular home has been submitted to the building official. I don't, we don't really care what the color of the paint's gonna be, but we wanna know what's gonna be there. And that's, that's fairly common in new construction as well, and I'm pretty sure, going back to the other item, that'll be something that'll be brought up every once in a while. A flat map of the land that the modular home is to be placed upon must be furnished with building permit. And finally, the city reserves the right for the advocate to produce an illustrated picture or of the quote finished product, as well as charging fees for various inspections and other actions that require time from the city staff. That's it in a nutshell.
There was a program on television that shows modular homes being built, and they do transport them to the site with wheels underneath them, with, with tongue on it and whatever. Uh, when they get there, they take the wheels and the tongue and everything off, and it's still on a steel ivy underneath there for the structure of the house, but everything else is gone.
Yes.
So, yes.
Once, modular home, once it's set, it's not really designed to be.
Um, I had a friend that had one built in Breckenridge, and he moved it out in the country, and he put his on a solid foundation all the way around out of concrete, and they had to have a crane to lift the sections onto it to get it tied down.
Yes. There's another requirement in here that the statute allows for. I did not put it in here, I wanted to hear your take and get y'all's feedback. One, the, the biggest requirement is, is the value of the property.
Has to match.
It has to be within fifty percent of the median value of all, all homes within a five-hundred-foot area. So if the average house is a hundred fifty thousand dollars in value, that house has to be valued at a hundred fifty thousand. Now, the reason I put it in there is, I'm gonna visit with the tax office. If they come in and they tell Steve and Corey that the house is worth a hundred seventy thousand dollars, that does not mean that's what the, the tax value is going to be.
It's just the cost. Probably, most cities, it takes us right on those, that. Just from my experience.
In fact, he did, the, the, the new tax appraiser suggested that it's very likely that those houses will likely diminish in value. So if it's valued at a hundred fifty thousand on day one, by year five, it could be lower to a hundred twenty thousand. It's just, there's private ownership and things like that. We can put that provision in there. Um, I don't know how big of an obstacle it's gonna be. The other, the other provision that we can put in there, and I'm waiting to hear back from T M L, because I figured this is just a draft, so we have some time, is that we can make them declare this as real property and not personal property. Mobile homes can be declared personal property. And so you may actually own the land, but the single wide has no value. It can be declared as personal property. I didn't know that.
Well, that's probably the truth for modular, if you gotta take out real, real old keys, put them on the foundation, that's a.
Well, you could, you could require it being declared as real property, and, and that would, that would stop the person bringing in the, the single wide saying it's modular. Making this.
Well, even if they want to bring in a single wide, and they want to put a foundation, four piers, welded to the frame, strap it down, I mean, if you wanna go through that, that's.
Mine's strapped down to the.
You've just, you've just eliminated any kind of flexibility, really.
Yeah.
But it does not have a solid foundation, and it, it has the cinder blocks all the way around, at certain spots, and underneath, but it is tied down to the ground. It has no tires on it anymore.
Yeah.
There's no tires, but it do have the tongue underneath the house. I could sell that for money now, couldn't I?
The tongue? Or the strap?
Scrap.
Oh, right.
Well, right, you stay out.
Can we just get two cents a pound, is that just?
They just hang on to your scrap, because you're not getting anything out of it.
Yeah, it's staying out.
We, we took some stuff from the scrap, and we tossed it more to haul it to the scrap hub, and we got the check out of it.
Yeah, well, to our work.
So what are y'all's thoughts? I mean, would this address our issues?
Yeah, I think so.
Do we wanna make it more restrictive, less restrictive, or are we right on the dot? Again, we don't need, I don't think we put on the agenda purposely to take action, this is more to hear your feedback. If you, if you wanna take action on it, we can leave it as it is, um.
So the real question is, do we wanna add the valuation part in? Because the other question is, do we wanna add the real versus personal tax yet? Right?
Yes. I would say so. While y'all are considering that, one of the notes in here from City of Snyder, and I just wanna get this out there for the record. Uh, this is an email that we got from Snyder's code enforcement officer. The backstory here is Snyder was actually sued for violating the modular home statute, for lack of a better term. Their zoning, uh, director emailed me and said, we have been advised that modular homes or industrial manufactured homes constructed or in registered accordance with the Texas Department of Licensing Regulation, T D L R, cannot, cannot be excluded in the R-one single-family or R-two limited multifamily residential zones. However, they shall be on a permanent foundation, which we've done, and modified externally to appear as a site-built structure in appearance similar to the structures of the immediate area. The finished floor grade of the structure shall be similar in elevation to the existing site-built structures in the area. So you can exclude, but you can make them, basically, you can make them look like a duck, even though they're not really considered a duck. You can put, we, we can put certain brick requirements. Has to be so much brick. Or we can, we can require that they all have.
Neither metal.
What are you saying, as far as? As far as a modular, by the code, they have to have a foundation, similar to like the Norans, I mean, they went in there and actually had, was it one by one by two or three foot each?
Yeah.
Foundation type?
Yeah. This is, I think what we have here, most of. I don't know about the valuation thing, I just don't know. I mean, somebody decides, somebody decides to go put a five-hundred thousand dollar building, let's say they win this lottery, and they build a five-hundred thousand dollar building, and nobody can build next to them, because nobody can afford a ton of fifty thousand dollar house. I mean, it's just, uh.
Within the average of, of every, that you're right.
Well, within five hundred feet.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that makes it tough.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
The personal words are private, though, I do, I would say.
I'd say, I think, by, by nature, if you're gonna put it on a foundation, you've lost the argument.
That's right.
Or, or, or personal property, you just lost the argument. We're just not gonna hear it, because you strap it down, it is a, it is real property.
Right.
You're out of luck.
Well, if they follow the codes that have been forced.
Right.
Then they have to follow that.
Exactly.
Yeah, so it's not gonna go anywhere anyway.
Right.
If y'all like this.
I'll make a motion that we accept the draft modular home ordinance.
Second.
That's second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I kinda, just to be clear, this is moving forwards, not retro, I can't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm putting it forward, right.
Yeah, it's in there. Yeah, this is, um, there's nothing we can do in the past, this is moving forward, going right forward.
No, you can't amortize it.
Before we get to amortization, uh, actually, I'm the next to deny.
All right, is there all matters incident aggravated to a premium and authorizing publication and notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, including the adoption of resolution pertaining thereto.
Clearly, I've thought of this agenda item unliterally.
You're right.
We, um, this is the first step in purchasing the water meters. The refresh button here is, this is gonna come out of ten point seven million dollar funding that we got from the Water Development Board, that was to be used for alternative water resources. I think we, as a council, have pretty much unanimously decided that there's nothing to do with this ten million dollars, and we're gonna address uh, those needs here in the upcoming months. As far as the current funding, which expires in April, it was a use it or lose it, um, proposition. One of the things that have been cut for a number of years, five, six years, is that fair to say? Has been an automated meter reading system. And so this was an opportunity for us to get meters at a thirty percent discount, and it's also the only way we're going to recoup our soft costs on the, uh, Brant Water Meter Project. Those soft costs were possibly ninety thousand dollars. Hey, uh, Vincent Todd, the hydrologist, Martin Rochelle.
For the record, we'd already had automated water meters, we would have put R O in.
Yes.
Way back when.
Uh, for the record. Yes, for the record, we would have had a lot of things.
Including more water.
Now, this is the first step. What you're going to be doing is, you are, um, basically, we're providing notice of, of intent to issue certificates of obligation. They have a number in here, um, of, of a little over a million. It's not going to cost a million dollars, I wanted to be clear about that. Here's where that number comes from. We had to, when we declared the intent to issue the bond, we had to put a number in there. Clearly, I'm going high. Because if we say, really, we're gonna issue half a million dollars of bonds, and it turns out it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars, this whole thing is complete. So I went high, and I just had a conference call, uh, with our bond counsel and our financial advisor. They're okay with that. We put a bid out, uh, we put R F P out, uh, last week. We will have a bid opening on November the twenty-first. On that day, I will know, uh, a lot, a lot more certainty, it's been a good, uh.
November the twenty-first?
November?
Sorry, January twenty-first.
So, so we say a million, just over a million dollars here, but if it turns out it's eight hundred fifty, do we have to issue a million something dollars?
No. Okay, that's all. That's why we would consider.
Go high.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're covering.
That's why we would consider. So that's what, um, we will, we will have a good idea. Um, I was, I, I'm kinda shocked if you put the R F P out, and I sent, you gotta fill the paper, and then you gotta notify these three vendors. Uh, the three vendors I notified have all responded, and then I've received three other solicitations as well. And so this only benefits us, because, um, we know what we want out of the system. And so it depends, do we want a G M C, or a Ford, or a Dodge? And, and, uh, what I will do on the twenty-first is I'll open all the bids, and then I'll get with the Water Department, and we will vet out some of the more qualified bids, some of the bids that will meet our needs better. And then we will do our due diligence, and then we will come back to you guys with a recommendation. And at that point, we want, we should have a solid, more solid number. Keep in mind that the bond amount, even if it didn't, let's just say it's a million dollars, because it's a nice round number. We're only gonna finance seventy percent of that. So we would only finance seven hundred thousand and not the full amount. Or if it's nine hundred thousand, we'd only finance six hundred thousand or something, what the case may be. There's gonna be about fifty thousand, forty to fifty thousand dollars of soft cost. We have to pay the bond attorney, we have to pay the financial advisor, we have to pay the attorney general for review of bonds, and then the Water Development Board puts a two percent premium on their work as well. And those are gonna be our soft ones. Is that clear as mine?
Yep.
Yep.
The only question we have, when you see exhibit A in your packet, it says twelve o'clock noon on the sixteenth of February of twenty sixteen. We are going to have, here's how this works. We were funded for ten million dollars. We're going to reduce that number to X, but let's just say a million for, for a natural number. We're going to reduce that number to X. The Water Development Board, the board itself, has to approve the reduction. The Water Development Board, the board itself, has to approve the reduction. Okay? That reduction, then we have to adopt or approve their reduction of it. Is that, is this clear as much? We cannot have a meeting until they have their reading. They are having their reading on February the eighteenth at nine thirty in the morning. So they have asked us to either hold off on this until the night of the eighteenth or morning or lunch of the nineteenth. Does that make sense? So we can do, we can accept their modification, and we can also issue the certificates of obligation at that time. My question to you is, do you want to meet on the eighteenth or do you want to meet on the nineteenth? The eighteenth is a Thursday. I will be at the board meeting, I'm assuming the mayor's gonna go with me, but that's not guaranteed. I will be at the board meeting that morning when they reduce our amount, and then I can be back here, they meet at nine o'clock, I'd be out of Austin by twelve, I could be back here by five thirty, six o'clock, we get it easy. So we can meet that Thursday afternoon, or we can meet that Friday at noon.
Friday at noon is fine. But we definitely want to get a face.
Sure FaceTime it. Hey, if we had a new computer, you can do that. All I have to do is see your face and see you, see you live. Well, have somebody else drive and FaceTime your phone.
Pull over sideways.
What's your?
Thursdays are bad, Thursday night would be better because I have elementary, and their lunch hours don't agree with what I know we want to meet. Friday, I have school, but we could, that would be the X high school, their lunch hour.
So y'all want to, y'all want to do five thirty or six o'clock on the eighteenth? It'll be, it will be a short meeting, there'll only be two things on it.
Sure.
Okay, so what time do you come?
What time do we work for y'all, five thirty or six?
Whatever.
Five thirty.
You're the one that's bad.
That's right, you're the one that has to get back, so.
Give me, let's say six o'clock, just be specific. Six o'clock. On the eighteenth day of February. And then I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
I need the motion to adopt the resolution. Authorizing. Issue a certificate?
Certificate of obligation.
Yes, certificate of obligation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we said February eighteenth at six o'clock.
Don't go into six, you should be fully. I'm working on getting out of here, guys. I got a foot wash. Go Clemson, yes, I said it.
Maybe we did have a foot washing, maybe we don't. That's in the salad right now.
So this is for the new police vehicles?
The next agenda item? Yes, oh yeah, I didn't know it was the one that I.
All right, discuss and consider resolution regarding finance contract for the purpose of procuring police vehicles.
Okay, this is the two police vehicles that we've got, the grant for from USDA. Essentially, it's a buy one, get one. We have to front the money and then we get reimbursed. Government Capital is a group that I've worked with before out of Dallas, or the Dallas area, and the City of Ballenger has a relationship with them as well. We will buy roughly eighty thousand, things will be anyone and change, but we will buy roughly eighty thousand dollars worth of equipment, which is going to be a brand-new Tahoe, fully equipped, light bar, decals, the whole nine yards. And then we're going to buy an animal control officer vehicle, which is going to be a two thousand sixteen Chevy three-quarter ton. Cabin chassis own, we're going to take the slide off of the existing, of the cage, off the existing A C O truck, and put it on a new A C O truck.
There's no issues with doing that. No, it came off here right again.
Equipment cost eighty thousand. We will get, two days after, within forty-eight hours after we have, after they have verified the car's up here and working and running, they will put forty thousand dollars and thirty-nine thousand eight something into our check account, and that will pay, will make that one payment to Government Capital. The first payment that will come out of our funding, out of our funds, will not be until October of twenty seventeen. At that point, we can do a four or five payment option, the interest rate is still the same. It's nine thousand dollars, ninety-five hundred dollars annually. If we did the five-year option, if we did the four-year option, it's eleven thousand six. What I need from y'all is, we need to pass a resolution, and then I want your guidance on whether you want a four-year or a five-year one.
I think most of them will go to resolution regarding finance, finance contract for the purpose of procuring police vehicles.
Second. Do you want, sorry, do you want to add?
You want to, you want to do four or a?
Four-year payment option.
Four-year payment option. Interest rate's the same.
Is it?
Five-year payment option.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. All right, consider approval of building permits.
We have a few, and we have pictures, and you will have video of this, of your kids as well.
Do we want, do we need to redo this? Or y'all already went through it?
We do what?
Do it on the premise.
I'm not following your questions, Steve.
Y'all, you don't want Steve to go through all six of them, or you want to? Here's what we did, and y'all were actually, this was actually one of the inspirations for this, is Cory's has done a great job, go back to the first one, Cory. Cory's done a great job of telling you what the permit is, where it's at, we got a Google Earth shot of it, so we're not trying to sit here and figure it out, it's over by Cory's house, and the ex-lieutenant's sister or brother lives there.
This is it shopping.
This is shopping.
I'm showing two permits for them, is that right? Okay, so there's two separate ones, all right. I saw two of one and twenty-four, so I thought we had to do. Cool. Awesome.
What is, what's Templeton doing?
Uh, carport in the lot to the northeast side.
Apples?
Oh, front porch, yeah, front net with a roof, eight by third two.
So that's a now the existing?
Yeah.
I like that other one, when you have the little guy, and you had it shaded where it's safe, it's showing us what it's putting.
Right. Uh, and your Marquardt, uh, first thing I want to draw, and then the middle carport. Uh, both pack plus, a one hundred by four by eight foot, that's brilliant. I have one coming in today. And it is Howard Walker, the twelve oh eight eight, and it's gonna be in a, in a position that's back with half a claw. It's eight by, uh, I'm sorry, uh, six by twenty, uh, claw. And I have a picture of the crossing, he's not paying your rent, it's gonna be a, a far setback issue.
And motion accepted, the building permits have presented. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Steve.
Thank you, please, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Cory. All right, here the police activity monthly report from Chief Martha Feltler, please.
We should have two pages that I want the yearly total monthly for December. December was relatively aquatic, only nine arrests, seventy-two citations. As you can see, most of the numbers are lower than usual, except accidents, but they had more accidents, the cold weather had some icy days. Uh, for yearly totals, it was about average, three hundred seventy-nine reports, we averaged somewhere around four hundred, close to four hundred. So about the same as usual, hundred and three accidents, seven hundred ninety-five citations. I'll have, should have the racial profiling report done. It's actually done, I just got a weekly picture, it's correct.
Wouldn't you have that on the next agenda?
Yeah. We'll have that done shortly, and. For December, we did Blue Santa, Secret Santa, whatever we want to call it. We had a benefactor give us two thousand dollars that we gave out to some media families. We also had some toys that were given to us that we handed out on Christmas Eve. Most of them, we got a few that could do with all of them.
Does Stan enjoy it?
And Stan is recovering from a surgery, he said he still can't squeeze very well, but he's, he's got his feeling back and everything in his hands. So he should be okay. Another thing I wanted to mention, I don't know what I told my officers, in reference to the sheriff's primary going on, I told him, when you're in uniform, don't, don't get into it. If somebody comes up to you and asks, obviously, you gotta talk to them, but, so the police firm is not endorsing anybody, so while you're in uniform, try to stay out of that sort of thing. Because they are coming up to me, and I know we're going up to some of my officers too. And like I said, we're basically trying to stay out of, the campaign zone, so. But that's all I've got.
Any, any incidents with open carry?
I've seen one person open carrying personally. We haven't had any incidents of it. We had that forum, we got about that, that was in December, about seventy people, something like that. Had a lot of questions, but they went, they basically answered most of them. So it's, they had no problems over. There are a lot of questions, can they go to courthouse, can they go to City Hall, because it's attached to here, all that sort of stuff.
One just read the day that if you go to Walmart, they're gonna check your pencil handle, because they sell alcohol that required to have T A B C. It's not something they volunteered for. It's something they have to do, there, there's people all upset about it, that's the problem.
That's your, their problem overall.
There isn't, if there's any incidents.
So if they're showing.
If they're showing, if they're. The manager's from Walmart, a senior person's gonna come up and say, can I see your, can I see your pencil handle? And the T A B C requires that. Pretty sure there's no training.
Well, to dovetail off that, T M L, and I think TAC has a similar position, Tactics Association of Chambers, that it's unclear as to whether or not we can allow open carry, say, back in my office, or where the girls pay, you know, where you pay the work. Is that considered city council chambers? T M L is going to have a webinar, February second or early tenth, one of the two. And I'd like for you to sit in on it. We're, they were gonna do it live, so about ten minutes. And so they're gonna do a live webinar. And our T M L lawyers will answer some of the questions, like, can you do that, can we allow open carry? I'll put, of course, we saw the article in Paper last week. I'm waiting to get some more guidance and clairvoyance on what the statute says, I think Mark said it absolutely perfectly.
My understanding on this right here is if you come in here at eight o'clock tomorrow morning, and y'all are not in session, you're okay, but if you came in here right now, it is, yeah. Does that make sense?
If the Parks Department, you can consider city council chambers.
That's a governmental.
Yeah, that's where, there's a lot of ambiguity in the statute, so I don't have a problem with open carry, just for the record, not a personal problem, not personally. But I want to make sure we're protected every way we can before we do or don't put the sign.
Currently, do we have to take down the signs we have, because they don't even have to obey them, truthfully?
Well, you have those, those out there, but they don't mean much legally speaking. But if somebody of legal standing tells them, if they walk in here with an open carry and you didn't want it, somebody of legal standing says, you can't carry it in here, you need to go put it in your car, whatever, you can do that. Thank you.
And D T N.
Appreciate you. All right, here the city minister's financial report, please.
You have your financials in there. This represents the first quarter of fiscal year. Couple of things of note is, so we're actually ahead about a hundred thousand, a hundred and nineteen thousand on the bottom line. We're ahead in government, and we're also ahead in water, so we're doing fairly well in those two areas. I had Cory put the sales tax report up there. I wanted you to see as clearly as you can that, take a look at July of twenty fifteen, and we're, I'm gonna keep going back to that, and compare July twenty fifteen to July of twenty fourteen. And that's about an eighty-five thousand dollar hit. If you put that eighty-five thousand dollar hit into our fiscal year of nine thirty, you're well over a million dollars. The hit, obviously, if you remember, came from an audit that was ongoing for seven years. And while they got all their money back over a seventy-year period, it came out of us out of one month. So that caused, put us behind a fall from a cash flow standpoint. We were expecting that to get it. We're still doing fairly well, we're still right on track to, February's going to be another good month. February's always a good month because you get quarterly's, monthly's, any year. So February, we're gonna get the line, a good portion of our tax revenues. So you have your sales tax, you have your financials in here. Cory, go to this next slide, please. Uh, I want to show y'all some of the water projects that we're doing. That looked really bad on my computer than it is up there. That is the water line from Eighth Street to Park, in that big, long red one. That is a five, six-inch poly line that we are replacing. We are all the way down to the First Baptist Church, and we have about another two blocks to go. Then we will put the service connections in, the laterals across the street. The other line up there at the very top left, you'll see a little L shape. That is the Seventh Street line replacement from Broad to Country Club. We have paid for a bore under one fifty-eighth that will service the hospital and the nursing home. And so hopefully, that will, uh, alleviate the hospital outages. That line from Broad that, that we're replacing, gotta be at least fifty years old. It's probably closer to seventy.
That one's already laying out.
Yes, yes, we are.
It's already put together and laying out.
Excuse me, they are, that, I pulled them off of Bay Street and put them onto that, because I just did not want the hospital to be another water can. They're one of our more major customers. This is the loop, uh, that we're going to have. Uh, that's Jason Battle's building, um, to kind of give you a point of reference. Uh, there's a fire hydrant behind that building, we're going to go out, and where it kind of makes that angle, that's at, uh, the assisted living center that's just outside of the ETJ. Uh, again, the same company that was here, board underneath that, we kind of got a, a, a two per one mill since they were already down. We're going to, we went cross-country, I don't know who that belongs to, um, help me out.
Leonard.
Leonard, thank you. We went across that, um, bore underneath, and then we're going to come straight down one fifty-eight to, uh, you know, that little street, little, over there by the track, right around the school. We're going to come out right there. And so we'll see, and so that whole system out there will be looped. Uh, we're putting six-inch poly in, so it'll be cleaned up, we can add customers later. If Ballenger ever grows that way, and, and it's, most likely if it ever did, it'd grow that way. We have the capacity, the infrastructure to take care of reasonable growth. We turn into Frisco, we could. Now this, is the most talked about thing that's been going on at City Hall for four weeks. Yes, but... The machine, the way it works, and the machine just lays it out. We have the ability to do that right there, right now.
It just laying asphalt to carpet.
Please.
That's sanding it.
Sanding.
Off sanding.
But just lay that brick out like part, one minute.
But that'll look a lot longer than asphalt sheets.
It'd be just like these plates out there. Yeah, I'd leave them last long, long. Well done on that, you know, when you had a water leak, you had to go in and fix it, you could take the brick out, fix the leak, have it back in and put the brick back. Period. My idea, like. I'm sure there'd be a little bit more to it than that, but...
Are the bricks cheaper to purchase than asphalt?
We don't really, you know, we need, we'll have to call a chat, make sure. If you're buying, you buy the book, it probably wouldn't be here.
We've probably got a retail price, and so obviously, if you're going to buy them in mass, mass, mass quantities.
Yeah.
A couple of, where you're looking at it, a couple of things that, that I have concerns with initially is, can't hold the weight. And while residential traffic is not a lot, we have trash trucks that drive up and down the streets once a week, twice a week in some cases.
Trash trucks are driving all the bricks we have. But man, I don't know, difference between the bricks today and bricks back then, I mean, it could be different composition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other limitation is that it's only twenty feet wide. You have to have a runner. I, I don't think you can, can line them up perfectly, that makes sense, so you have to have a runner. Or, see if they can manufacture one that would be sixty feet to cover at least all the streets. That particular piece of equipment is sixty-two thousand dollars. Is significantly cheaper than some of the asphalt equipment we're running. Here's the really interesting part. And so far, Mr. Nixon has been reluctant to take part in this. They're only manufactured in the Netherlands.
Oh. So you got to ship it here.
So just say the word, and we'll go take a look at it. Mr. Stevens, you want to be able to... Councilman Harp has volunteered to lead the City Council convoy.
I don't think I did.
Oh, yeah, you did.
But I wouldn't mind going.
I am not suggesting that we do this, there's a whole lot more questions than there are, uh, answers at the moment, but I wanted y'all to take a look at it to think. I, I've now been a city manager in three different cities. And the one, and I've talked to city managers every week. And the, the best argument that we get into as city manager, without a doubt, without question or reservation, who has the worst streets in town? Who has the worst streets? Personally, I think Ganson does. They're really bad. But if you live here in Ballenger, the worst street you're on is the one you drive on every day. And so it doesn't really matter who, who does. We've all tried to find a way to do this, and we want to fix streets more economically. Something that's going to last. Truth be told, we're going to put, um, rock down on Eleventh Street, we'll probably put rock down on Eighth Street. And within ten years, we'll be doing the exact same thing. That little triangle area that, um, who's the accountant? Help me. Tammy, you complained about the water, can't drive down that street.
Oh, Ricky Songer?
Yes. Truth be told, probably shouldn't be a street. It's a waterway. Now, unless we're willing to build a cement factory out here, start cementing it. Just going to say that. We can, we can put lipstick on the pig, we've still got the pig.
Same way around the, um, entry and back of the football field, and down, what is that? Whatever, Twelfth Street or whatever, through there, because the water can, all, all back up in there, should have been.
We live in a town that has no drainage. None. The, the, when this town was laid out, the roads became drainage. And I guess in eighteen eighty-five, the street was flooded, you didn't put your horse in there.
If we can get it down to the railroad, the problem is getting it down to the railroad.
We get it over by my house and off the cliff. But it's just, it is incredibly naive to think that we can go out and spend thirty or forty million dollars repairing every square inch of street in town, and not have to come back and do it again. So this, we're kind of thinking outside the box here.
And you wouldn't have mirrors when the drainage problem, you wouldn't have all that gravel going down the road. A lot of that, all the road, you know.
Whatever, whatever culverts and drainage you do.
I guarantee you, a bit of city is called off, how much gravel, not the house?
Yeah.
The bottom of Ninth Street right there? And it's full again. And we really hadn't even had that big of rain.
Right.
It's full again.
Snow and ice. Um, but I wanted y'all to see the video, I wanted you to see that. We do have a bid opening, like I said earlier, on the twenty-first for the meters. Uh, we will not have a meeting on the nineteenth, unless y'all just think we should have a meeting on the nineteenth. Uh, so we'll only have one meeting this month, if something comes up, I'll let you guys know. Uh, Randy wanted me to pass along a note, that, uh, the last three days, we have been running solely on Lake Ballenger. We had a leak on the Ivy Line over about a one mile, and then we also had a leak inside the pump house. And both of those leaks have been repaired and corrected.
So ninety-nine percent empty?
If we use that much, we already pre-.
Fortunately, uh, we're, we're probably closer to ninety-five percent empty. I went out there today, and we caught little. It's still bad, I still want to take all y'all out there, and let you see it.
There's no kind of help, because I could see the crease on the running zone.
Um, one other thing, uh, we have, Steve and Carl have started taking a look at the old church, the new police department. We took the steeple off, uh, over there, it's dusted us in eighty percent of the way. We finished the job. Um, we're going to need a new roof on that, uh, probably are looking at a whole new electrical, at least a new box, uh, probably do wiring. But Steve and Carl will give me a budget, and I'll present that to you guys, and let you know how much it's going to cost. But we can do, we can, you heard us saying we can do a lot, lot worse is going to be drawable.
Oh, yeah, we can do most of it.
Yeah.
The, uh, the gun and the evidence room, you know, that'll have to be contracted.
Yeah.
Uh, and I want a couple of junior, they're going to get a price to do that. And, uh, we'll have to get a rooper.
Yeah.
Somebody put a roof on it. Uh, and the floor, you know, but the rest of the, you know, four of the inside stuff, we can do that.
That is all I have.
So we don't have any, another meeting for January, then we meet again?
February second.
Oh, and February second?
Yes, that's the first Monday.
Or the first?
February first. First, 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 first.
At regular time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. Unless y'all want to have another meeting in January, I mean, we got two Mondays, we got the nineteenth, which is next Monday, and the twenty-fifth, which is the Monday before we're going to begin, so...
Do we need?
If we need it, you can call it. If we don't need it, we just run it off. Any questions, issues, concerns?
Yep, nope. Alright, here request for future dinner plans from City Council, does anybody have anything else they'd like to add?
You don't want me to put the new construction ordinance on the next meeting? For you only?
Yeah, I think we can see what you're fine.
Okay. Mind if I bring it?
You probably got something, you probably got something to present to you guys.
Yes.
Yes, Andrew.
Yes.
Anything different to mention? It works? Alright, motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll say everything. Thank you.